I believe we are going to do the study session first and presenting by staff.
Thank you, Mayor, and good afternoon, everyone. Mayor and council members, members of the public and city staff. Thank you for joining us today. First, and for those that may not be aware, a study session is an informal meeting where the city council and staff discuss complex issues and gather information from the public without taking a formal vote. So there'll be no formal vote tonight or action by the council at today's meeting, in case that was a question in your mind. The purpose of today's meeting, which is our second study session on this topic, is to discuss the need for an adjustment to our water and sewer utility rates. Leading today's discussion is Public Works Director Iris Lee, who will introduce today's other presenters and moderate our meeting. Finally, council, you're welcome to ask questions as we move through the presentation, and we will be switching the agenda. We'll have public comments after the presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, honorable mayor, members of the city council, interim city manager Gallegos, and members of the public. At the March 10, 2025 Water and Sewer Rate Study Study Session, we provided an overview of where these two enterprise funds stand financially, what our infrastructure needs are, and what are the next steps we need from a system-wide perspective. To sum it up, we are in the red. We have failing infrastructure, and we need to adjust the rates to protect our health and safety. Tonight's study session will turn our focus to what this means to our ratepayers. And to do this, we need to get your thoughts on the overall capital improvement program scenarios that would be best suited for our city. And when I stress best suited for our city, because other agencies' approach may not address our situation, and each agency is different, and it's not always an apple-to-apple comparison. So what we're presenting to you tonight is a Seal Beach Taylor-specific approach. So option one is the recommended CIP, which, as your subject matter expert, are we're recommending for your next, as your focus for the next five years. We have aging infrastructure with a lot of emergency needs, and this is the most, the best, and most realistic approach to providing reliable water and sewer services. And then there is option two, which is the modified CIP, which is the absolute bare minimum that we should do. And this is not going to address all our emergency needs, and it will leave room for a degree of additional vulnerability. This may or may not cost us more at the end of the day, depending on how many emergency events that we have during the course of the next five years. Cost of operating a water and sewer utility is definitely escalating, and so is the cost of living in general. And we want to say that we understand that, and we get it. So while a bit on the riskier side, this option, option number two, is reflective of a cost versus operational scenario. And we're hoping to get your feedback on these two CIP scenarios tonight, as they will be the basis of what the proposed water and sewer rates will be. But before I turn this presentation over, I want to just provide two quick examples of the emergencies that are just happening recently. So from the water side, just last week, we had a water valve that failed along Westminster Avenue. So big arterial pipeline valve failed. This is in need of replacement, and it's not something we could repair. And if we try to isolate the system at that location, we would not be able to do so. This is in the magnitude of about roughly $100,000 because it is arterial, but we couldn't repair it because we don't, we just simply don't have the money to do so. So vulnerable position, this is just last week. So a couple weeks ago, earlier in April, from the sewer perspective, Sunset Aquatic Center, we almost had a sewer overage at that location, where overage would go directly into Anaheim Bay, which is an impaired body of water directly in the bay. There was a spike in wastewater usage in that area. Our lift station couldn't keep up. And also, this is the station that has two two-inch lines that convey wastewater out of the Sunset Aquatic Center. As you can imagine, two inches is quite small, so it does clog quite often over there. That is one of our high-priority CIPs at that location. So we end up having to call out our emergency factor to continuously do emergency suction out of that pump station and to discharge it downstream. And as you can imagine, if this is something that's ongoing for a number of hours, it's very costly, and frankly speaking, something that we can't avoid if we are being proactive with our infrastructure needs. So I share this to illustrate that the stakes are high, and we need to do something about it. With that, I'll turn this presentation over to Steve Gangen from Rafftelis.
Thank you, Iris. Good afternoon, council members. Very brief introduction. My name is Steve Gangen with Rafftelis. I'm the project manager, working for staff on this rate study. My analyst, Nick Kennedy, is in the audience, and Gina DePinto is leading the outreach for the study. So this presentation is a lot like the one that we did about five or six weeks ago. The main difference between this presentation and the prior presentation is that this time, we're going to show actual rates and bill impacts to customers. A lot of the slides are repeat, so I may go through some of them a little bit faster. But of course, if you want me to stop or expand on anything, please, please say so. So we'll have an introduction and a recap. We'll discuss why we're here, talking about the increase for rates. We'll talk about the CIP, and then we'll discuss the financial plan and rate options. Before we do that, I believe Nick is going to have a few comments on Prop 218.
Thank you, Steve. I was asked to provide just a brief explanation about what Prop 218 requires. Prop 218 was adopted by California voters in 1996. It was sponsored by the Howard Jarvis Taxpayer Association to protect taxpayers by limiting the methods by which local governments can raise revenue from ratepayers without a vote. And so Prop 218 governs property-related fees, which include water and wastewater service. Prop 218 requires the city to comply with certain procedural requirements prior to increasing the city's water and wastewater fees, including holding a public protest hearing. The city must mail notice of the hearing to property owners at least 45 days before the date of the hearing. Property owners and tenant customers may submit a written protest prior to the conclusion of the hearing. However, only one protest per parcel is counted. If there is a majority protest against the water or wastewater fees, then the council cannot approve an increase to the fees. A majority protest exists if the written protests represent the majority of parcels that receive the service. And Prop 218 also requires the water and wastewater fees to comply with certain substantive requirements. So each fee cannot exceed the city's cost to providing service, which includes primarily operation, maintenance, financial, and capital expenditures. In addition, the fee for each parcel cannot exceed the cost of providing the service to the parcel. And the city is burdened to show that the fees comply with these requirements. So when the water and wastewater rates were last increased in 2021, the city's consultants at Rafftelis prepared a comprehensive water and wastewater rate study. The study included a cost of service analysis and rate structure design. Then in 2023, the city again engaged Rafftelis to conduct a water and wastewater financial plan and rate study in connection with the proposed rate adjustments that were first considered in 2024 and are again considered being considered now. The purpose of the rate study is to justify why the proposed water and wastewater rates satisfy the requirements of Prop 218. Now, this study establishes the rates designed to recover the cost of funding the water and wastewater systems, and therefore reflects the maximum rates allowed by law. However, the city council is not legally required to adopt the rates and can consider other factors as it makes its decision. That's it for me.
Thank you, Nick. So just a little bit of background. This study started in June of 2023. It was postponed, and since then, the city implemented its final water rate increase that went into effect on January 21, 2025. The city obtained an Orange County Water District loan for a little over $4 million, and that's to help fund the Lampsen Well Treatment System, a project that we're going to talk about in a second. Since then, the city has revised its CIP estimates, and to no surprise, over the last couple of years, inflation has increased those CIP costs. And then last time we got together in December of 2023, we essentially had one scenario to choose from. This time, we have a scenario one and a scenario two, which Iris just talked about. There's been a couple regulatory updates, a recent bill, AB 2257, which talks about the exhaustion of administrative remedies that I believe the city is going to take advantage of. There's been Assembly Bill 755, which seeks to calculate the cost of serving water to an agency's top 10% of users. And Senate Bill 323 simply establishes a 120-day statute of limitations for someone who wants to pursue legal actions against the city. Okay, so why are we here? Why can't we just ignore this problem? And why are rate increases needed? We discussed these five slides last time, so I may go a little bit faster, but stop me if needed. The first reason is inflation. As we all know, inflation has been the highest in the last 40 years. On the right portion of this slide is simply a news article talking about the city of Ventura. Before COVID, the city of Ventura was, they're still planning a recycled water project, and they priced it at $374 million around just after COVID. And since then, that estimate has gone up twice. It went up from 374 to 556, and then they had to revise it yet again to 672 million for the same project, all because of inflation. So you're not the only ones that are feeling the pinch with the cost of materials. Here's one example at the city of Ventura. The second reason that is sometimes hard to understand and isn't popular is weather and rain. The fact is, you get a lot of revenue from selling water, and when it rains, people tend to water their lawns, yes, less, which means that you sell less water. So this table here shows that in 2021, you sold 1.4 million 100 cubic feet of water. And in 2023, it was a very wet year, and 2024 was also a very wet year. You sold 1.2 million 100 cubic feet of water, which in one year alone decreased your revenue by $600,000. Now, most of, you do save some money when you don't sell as much water, but most of your costs remain. Most of your costs are fixed, and you still need to pay for your projects and your materials and supplies. The second one is that, or the third one, is that you buy water from two agencies. You buy water from the Orange County Water District, which replenishes your groundwater so you can pump it up, and you buy water from the Metropolitan Water District of Orange County. OCWD is, has, is dealing with something called PFAS, perfluoroalkyl substances, and their rate increases have historically been in the lower single digits. Well, over the last few years, they've had three years of either near double-digit or double-digit rate increases, as shown by these red numbers right here. These are not in line with their historical norms. You have, that's what you pay for groundwater. MODOC, Municipal Water District of Orange County, is in the same boat. I'm only showing their volumetric rate here, but this year in fiscal year '26, they've got a double-digit rate increase. They also charge you fixed charges, and some of them have gone up double digits. So wholesaler costs is another reason why we're here today. We're going to go through a couple, a couple slides talking about your aging infrastructure. Iris just talked about a few incidences that have to do with your aging infrastructure, and we'll go through a couple of projects. We went through them more elaborately last time, but for the sake of time this time, we've, we're talking about only a few, few projects. With regards to your sewer enterprise, you are currently not meeting debt coverage ratios. And what does it mean to have a debt coverage ratio? So your sewer entity has three loans on the side of this, on the side of this slide right here. You have a 2011 bond. You have a state-revolving loan, two state-revolving loans. And when a city takes on debt, it enters into a debt covenant or a debt coverage agreement of 1.20. And what does that mean? That means you agree with the entity that loans you money. You agree to set rates such that you will have 1.2 times the amount that you have to pay them. So your current debt service is $500,000, and you have to set rates such that you collect a little bit more than $500,000. That's the 0.2 of this ratio right here. The 1.2, the 0.2 is a little safety factor. That means you collect a little bit more than what you have to pay. So taking 1.2 times 500, and it's a little more than 500, means you should have $600,000 left over after you're done paying for operating expenses to meet what's known as debt coverage, a covenants. Okay? And then the last thing I want to mention that a lot of people may not remember is that during the last study, you actually decreased your rates by 25%. And that undoubtedly contributed to where you are today. I can count on one hand how many times I've had clients reduce their rates. Usually, they go up, but they went down by 25% the last time we set rates.
Which was in 2019 or 2021?
2020, I think they went into effect. Yeah. So I think a lot of people forget that, but your rates went down 25% for sewer.
For sewer?
For sewer only.
Not water?
Not water. Water, they went up, but for sewer, they went down.
Thank you.
Okay, so talking about a few water capital projects, last time, we went through maybe about seven. This time, I think we're only going to go through two for the sake of time. This map here shows blue pipes and red pipes. The blue pipes are about 60 years old, and the red pipes are about 120 years old. Must have been built when this, right, when the city was built. And the engineering useful life of pipes is somewhere, depends on the pipe, the corrosivity of the soil, depends on a lot of factors, but it's usually somewhere in between 50 to 90 years. And these are 120 years old. And then the pictures on the right here, so you have, you have 73 miles of pipe. You have two booster stations. You have two reservoirs. And this picture on the right, right here, this is the Navy Reservoir, showing the condition of the Navy Reservoir here. And you have four wells. And speaking of wells, this is the Lampsen Well Treatment System. The Lampsen Well Treatment System produces, it produces naturally occurring hydrogen sulfide, so it can't pump at its full capacity. So this project would help get this well to pump at full capacity. And this is an important project because, you know what, I forgot to mention something, and it's important. Coming back to this slide right here, I want to point out something in this, in this top line right here. You get most of your water from groundwater, and as you can see, this line right here shows the cost per acre foot of groundwater. Let's just look at any year. Let's look at fiscal year '25. The cost for groundwater is just under $700 per acre foot, and the cost for imported water through the Metropolitan Water District of Orange County is $1,400 per acre foot. So the cost of imported water is double the price of groundwater, and that's why having working wells is very important, because you want to pump as much groundwater as you can. So having, getting this project going for Lampsen Well is important to have, is important to get all the groundwater that you need to.
Could I ask a question, please?
Yep, yep.
Have we had to import water any time the last couple of years?
Yes, you have. I don't know the exact amount, but I think you get about a third of your, of your water from MODOC, I believe.
Mayor Proton Steel, absolutely. During the time when all our production wells are, were actually non-functional, we actually had to import additional water. And this was the past summer that we had, we had to import about over three months worth of water, which caused another million dollar of a burden to our, our water enterprise fund.
Thank you. And by the way, this Lampsen Well project is being funded by the loan that the city got to the tune of about $4.4 million. I believe that's been approved, and you're moving forward with that project. So you would want to demonstrate that you can pay back this loan, and that's why I think another reason why this rate increase is very important. The next slide is the Los Cerritos Wetlands Authority Main Lining. This project is important because it's the transmission main that serves the lower or southern part of the city. And there's been pipeline assessments that show that there's severe degradation in this water main, and it needs a structural liner. I believe you're supposed to break ground in September of 2025 for this project, and you have its contingent on an SRF loan. Again, you would want to show the state through your date, your debt coverage requirements that you can pay back that loan. I'm sorry?
Does everyone know what SRF is?
SRF stands for State Revolving Fund Loan. It's a, it's a low-cost loan from the state. Thank you.
And I believe we've already had two breaks in that line, wetlands.
That is a correct statement. Because it is in the wetlands area, breaks are usually harder to detect because they are in
Wetland.
A wetter environment. But those were reported, and because due to the sensitivity of the habitat, we do have to get an emergency coastal development permit for each time we go in there to make those repairs.
Okay, so here we have the two scenarios. Water scenario number one is staff recommended, and these are the list of projects for scenario one. And I think the main thing I want to point out is at the bottom here, is that over the five-year period, it's a total of $44 million in CIP. And then we have scenario two, which pushes back projects and lowers the rates a little bit. And the total CIP over this five-year setting period is 34 million instead of 44 million. So let's take a look at the finance, the water financial plan. And this table shows a couple years of simple cash flow accounting. By that, I mean it's simply money coming in, subtract money coming out. What do you have left? So let's take any year for the sake of discussion here. Let's take fiscal year '25. You have just under 7 million coming in. You have just about 6.9 million coming out. And then you have to pay your debt service. It looks like you're, you're planning to end your debt service in this year, so you won't have any in the future years. But in this fiscal year, which is about two months over, you are in the red, so to speak. And the important part, one second, the important part of this table is that you haven't done any capital. You're in the red before doing any capital. Yes, sir?
This is current state. This is without any increases in rates.
Correct. Thank you. Yes, I should have mentioned that.
And this is the status quo going forward. We're going to be in the red in this fiscal year by about 85,000. Last fiscal year, our audited results showed a deficit, a loss in our enterprise by about 1.7 million. Is there, it seems like 1.7 million versus 85. It looks like we're getting better, not worse.
Well, remember, this is before capital, before you spend on all the projects. So it is not quite apples-to-apples to what you're referencing, because that likely has a cost for, of capital in it. So it's not quite the same.
If I may also comment on the debt service, this also assumes that we are going to be paying out our West Orange County Water Board OC35 loan as well. This is a little bit premature that shows that service is zero in the upcoming years, but it is something that ideally, if we can actually have the funding to pay off that higher interest rate loan, we would like to do so, which is reflected in the above.
This anticipates retiring existing debt.
Yes, the one existing debt that we do have.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so we propose two scenarios shown here. This slide actually shows the increase in revenue, but I'm actually going to skip to this next slide because I think it's the same as the prior one. It just, instead of showing the revenue dollars, it shows the percentage increases in revenue. So in scenario one, I'll walk through it. In scenario one, what we're saying is we would set rates in the next fiscal year such that your revenue would increase by 38% in the first year, and then go up by 23, 5, 5, 5. So that the total, over the five years, the total growth in your revenue would be 96%. This assumes, this assumes you would do the 44 million in CIP that we just showed you in a prior slide. You would take on 25 million in market debt. You would also take on nearly 10 million in a state revolving fund loan, and you would take on the 4.4 million from the Orange County Water District. That's scenario one. Scenario two, with the slightly lower CIP, says that we would increase your revenue by 29% in the first fiscal year, followed by 15, 8, 7, and 6, for a total five-year growth of 82%. That would allow you to do 30 million, 34 million in the five-year period. It pushes out projects a little bit, and you would, you would have the, this corresponding amount of debt to take on. So before I show you the resulting reserve balance estimates, I just want to remind everyone that utilities need reserves, and you need to plan for reserves during a rate study. Your current reserve targets are an operating reserve of 25% of expenses. This is known as working capital. And then you have a capital reserve target of 25% of the average of what you're going to spend yearly for the next five years. I want to point out that this 25% is more typically 100% for other cities and other clients. So this 25% is, is just one way that the city is attempting to minimize the bill impacts for, for its customers, because that 25% is usually 100%. So this, what it means is you're going to see a graph, right, and there's going to be these reserve targets on it of in between 2 to 3.5 million dollars. There's going to be some lines. Those are the reserve targets that are seeking to meet these targets right here. So this is scenario one, and in scenario one, the graph on the left shows that your debt coverage would just be fine. Remember, the goal is 1.2, and you would be in the twos, so that's okay. And this graph on the right shows your reserve, your estimated reserve balances. And the rate-setting period starts in fiscal year '26, and it goes out to fiscal year 2030. It's a five-year rate-setting period. So the reason why your reserves are a little higher than target, so these, this orange line right here is your total operating and capital reserve target, and it's higher. The reason is because you've taken on debt, and you're paying for your capital projects through debt, if you will. As soon as you go back to funding projects through cash, you start to burn through your reserves. So you can see three years out, what we've done is so that you're not, you know, up a creek without a paddle at the end of your rate study period here. We've modeled a few, three more years to make sure that you're okay for a couple of years, because as soon as you, you burn through your debt proceeds, you, you then burn through your cash, and you end up right where you want to be a few years hence. Okay? And then here's scenario two. Your debt coverage is okay for a number of years. You're meeting reserve targets right out until 2030. Again, you're a little bit higher, and then you get the same phenomenon. As soon as you use your debt proceeds, you start to come back down towards your revenue, your reserve targets. Now, there's something that has changed since the last study that some of you know about, that we have to go through, and I hope I can be as clear as I can here. But there's a calculation for Leisure World, and Leisure World is unique. At least, I haven't seen a situation like Leisure World in 16 years of doing this.
Happy to be unique.
And the reason why it's unique is because, so for a typical commercial property or a home property, you have a water line in the street and a lateral that goes to a meter, and the water serves that property and only that property. There's not a line coming out of the back of your house serving your neighbor. Well, in Leisure World, it has two 12-inch meters, one right here and one right here, and water comes into Leisure World through those two 12-inch meters, and then it serves the community of Leisure World, and then the water exits out to eight-inch meters, and it serves College Park West and College Park East. It also serves these commercial areas shown here in red. So what the city does to build Leisure World is it takes the water coming in through the 12-inch meters, subtracts the water going out from the eight-inch meters and then the commercial areas, and says, that's the amount that we need to build Leisure World. And during the last study, there was an estimate made based on the average daily flow through Leisure World, that the, that the meter that would be needed to serve Leisure World would be six inches. The city decided to go out and get a The city decided to go out and get a professional opinion on the meter sizes to serve Leisure World. And it turns out that Leisure World needs two 12-inch meters to serve it. So we are doing the same, so we revise the calculation. So the calc, the calculation is the same, but the assumption going into the calculation is now different. So that leads to this slide here. And I'm going to try to explain this as clearly as I can. So here's what everyone is paying in this column right here. And assuming that Leisure World has one six-inch meter, these are the charges that everyone would pay. And Leisure World would go with its one-inch meter would go from a 1,300, these are, this is bimonthly, would pay 1,300 bimonthly, would then pay 1,800 bimonthly, if you'll allow me to round. But now, if we revise this calculation, Leisure World now has two 12-inch meters. Leisure World is now down here at a 12-inch meter. So Leisure World would pay, again, I'm rounding, $7,500 per 12-inch meter. So 75 times two, that's just shy of 15,000. So with this revised calculation, Leisure World is going from paying 1,800 bimonthly to 15,000 bimonthly. And because the calculation allocates costs in proportion to the number and size of meters, what it means is that everybody else who has these meter sizes right here, you can see the difference on the right in the red right here. It depends on the scenario that you choose or may choose today. But everyone else's fixed charge would either go down $1.60 if, I'm looking at the most numerous meter, which is the 3/4-inch meter. Everyone else's charge would go down either $1.60 or $1.50. I should point out that this 12-inch meter, these two 12-inch meters that were sized to serve Leisure World account for peaking needs and fire flow as opposed to average daily flow. So with that in mind, Leisure World would not pay, it has, it has four private fire accounts on the premise. Leisure World, because it's already accounted for in the fixed charge, they would not pay for those private fire charges because it's already accounted for in their two 12-inch meters. I think that's all I wanted to say on this slide. Any questions here before I move forward?
I'll reserve my questions for later.
Okay. So this table shows the fixed charges for each scenario. Let's just look at the most numerous meter. Under scenario one, your most numerous meter is a 3/4-inch meter. So right now, you're paying 52 bucks and change under scenario one. That would go to 70.
Every two months.
Every two months, bimonthly. Did I say monthly?
No.
Pardon. Every two months, scenario one goes from 52 to 71. If scenario two is chosen, it goes from 52 to 66. And this is the majority of your meters, something like 80% of your meters are this 3/4-inch meter right here. On the bottom, it shows private fire charges. That's mostly for businesses and some multifamily complexes. This shows the proposed volumetric rates for each scenario, looking at residential, which are most of your customers. Tier one would go from 377 to 520 under scenario one in the first year. Under scenario two, it would go from 377 to 486. And so, moving on to sewer. This map here shows your sewer system. You have 34 miles of buried sewer pipe. You have 800 manholes and six pump stations. This map shows some red pipes. The red pipes and the gold pipes are in poor condition. The purple pipes are in moderate condition and the blue pipes are in good condition. Iris was talking earlier about the Sunset, Sunset Aquatic Pump Station. This pump station is in Anaheim, Anaheim, Anaheim Bay. Iris just mentioned that you had a near spill of sewage on April 2nd. This pump station uses two 2-inch force mains. And I understand that there's a 4-inch force main that is partially completed. It should be using that 4-inch four main, force main. In the, in the world of hydraulics of engineering, two 2-inch force mains does not equal one 4-inch force main. It has to do with pi and the, the flow through a circle. As Iris mentioned, two 2-inch force mains leads to a lot of clogs for sewage. And a sewer spill in Anaheim Bay could result in costly fines. I understand this pump station also has some power outage problems as well as the clogging from the 2-inch force mains. So this project would upsize the force mains and upgrade the pumps to make sure you don't get any fines. And in the prior presentation, we did talk about other sewage capital projects, but we're just narrowing it down for this presentation. So for sewer, here is scenario number one. It has a total of 19 million for the five-year study period. Scenario number two has a slightly lower $16 million capital project list. And I believe that signifies that a lot of these projects are very important because staff tried to cull the projects. So now, going through the sewer financial plan. So here, remember that you have the three bonds that I mentioned, two state revolving fund loans and a regular market debt. And that you have to set rates such that your net cash flow is somewhere around, around $600,000. And what this shows in fiscal year 25 is you've got about 2.6 coming in. You've got about 2.5 coming out. And if you do the math, 2.6 minus 2.5-ish, it's not the $600,000 that you have coveted for with your bondholders. After you pay for debt service, you're in the red as shown here. And this, again, is before you've done any capital projects. You're in the red before you've done any capital projects. So here we are with, yes, I do. Okay, so here we are with the, the different scenarios. And I'm just going to skip to the next one because I think it's more clear. So this, by the way, this column here, December 23, this shows you what we presented probably a year and a half ago or so. At that time, we, we had revenue increases of 35 and so on, so that it was a total of 141. But in front of you today is scenario one with these revenue increases here, such that the total over five years is 117 if scenario one is selected. Scenario two is these revenue increases for a total of 102% over five years. The reason why scenario one and scenario two are the same in the first year is to get you to be meeting your debt coverage requirements. That is limiting your first-year revenue increase. You need the 34% to meet debt coverage requirements. So just continuing on, scenario one does 19 million, scenario two does 16 million, and you take on a certain amount of market debt in each. Again, a reminder that you have to plan for reserves for your sewer. That means somewhere around 1 to 1 and 1/2 million in reserves. So this shows scenario one. Again, I want to point out right here in the red box that 34% gets you a 1.21 debt coverage requirement. When your minimum is 1.20, working with financial advisors in the past, they would like to see a little bit more of a margin there. You're essentially right at 1.20. There's no room for error. They would like to see a little more, but this is the lowest you can go. The slide on the right shows your reserve balances up until the very end of the study period. So you're right at your reserve targets at the end of the study period. This is scenario one. This is scenario two. So again, you need that, you need the 34% to meet your debt coverage requirement. And at the end of the study period, you're just slightly above your, your reserve targets. So this shows the rates, the sewer rates for scenario one. Single family right now pays a fixed charge. And right now, single-family house pays $48. Under scenario one, that would go to $64. And bimonthly, thank you. And then it would go up to 104 bimonthly by the end of the study period. I'll contrast that with scenario two. Would go to 64. And so that's the same, again, because the revenue adjustment is the same. But the difference between scenario one and two is where you end up at the end of the fifth year. So scenario one was 104, scenario two is 97. So this chart shows the rates and charges for each class, but I, I think what everybody wants to know is how my, how is my bill going to be impacted? And that's what these, the next few slides talk about. So this is scenario one. This is a bimonthly bill impact. And what it shows here is for the typical single family underneath this residential right here, their bill would go up $60 bimonthly under scenario one, so $30 monthly. And then the, on the right here, it shows the typical bill impact for different customer classes. So that's scenario one. Scenario two is instead of $60 bimonthly, it's $50 bimonthly. And then there was a request to see what this meant over the course of five years. So this graph simply shows what will happen to residential over five years. So the, this is bimonthly here. So bimonthly, you're paying $60 more compared to what you're paying now. By the end of the study, you're paying $170 more compared to what you pay now. And then this line here shows the yearly impact. Okay, so $362 more a year at year one. And then scenario two is the same graph except under the scenario two revenue increases. So lastly, I want to show, I want to talk about the impact to Leisure World, especially because of that, the change in the assumption there and going from six to 12. Leisure World, the total bill impact under scenario one for Leisure World is right here. This is an annual difference. So 3/4 of a million dollar increase under scenario one for Leisure World.
That's the increase.
That is just the increase under scenario one, yes. Under scenario two, it's a little less at $600,000 a year. So the last slide, in summary, we talked about why we're here. Inflation, lower revenue, wholesale water agency rate hikes and aging infrastructure all contribute to why you're here today. The proposed revenue increases will restore the utility's financial health, allow you to continue to serve water, maintain infrastructure. And most importantly, you're taking on debt in either of these two scenarios. It will help you to get a debt coverage ratio where it needs to be. And I believe that summarizes the presentation. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Were you going to do the outreach?
There was one slide on communications. I always forget. I'm so sorry. But there's
It's okay.
Slide on communications.
Just to remind everyone that we do have a website with the information on the study. And we continue to update dates of, you know, right now, the next meeting that the city council will consider. What we've seen and heard today is right now scheduled for May 12th. And we have some tentative dates for some community outreach and engagement meetings. So just want everyone to keep your bookmark the site and continue to come back as we keep the information updated. Thank you.
I had a question for slides 32 and 33. For the sewer scenario one, the recommended CIP versus the modified CIP. Why does the cost specifically for the line item, the sewer mainline improvement program? Why does that go from 500,000 each year in scenario one, but in scenario two, it goes up to 750 per year?
Sure. The reason why is that instead of focusing on, in scenario when, where we were focused more on pump stations and pump station rehabs, we're taking this opportunity in scenario two to shift some of the focus to pipeline rehabs. So OSS two, the second line item that you see has gone from $500,000 annually under scenario one to $750,000 under scenario two. And then you see a pushout of some pump station work.
Mayor, if we can, could we, could we do public comments now?
Did you have any other questions, Ben?
I do, but I have, I, I just have to think through my questions on how I want to go about this, but I'm, not, not right now.
Okay. Okay, we're going to move on to oral communications. At this time, members of the public may address the council regarding any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on any items not on the agenda unless authorized by law. Matters not on the agenda may, at the council's discretion, be referred to the city manager and placed on a future agenda. All speakers will be limited to a period of five minutes. Speakers must address their comments only to the mayor and entire city council and not to any individual member of staff or audience. Any documents for review should be presented to the city clerk for distribution. Speaker cards are available at the clerk's desk for those wishing to sign up to address the council, although the submission of a speaker card is not required in order to address the council. Are there any public comments? James? Ellery?
Hi, Ellery Deaton. First of all, I'd just like to say this is a workshop and I'm a little taken back that we have five minutes of oral communication, very formal. This is supposed to be informal. There are lots of questions. I could ask a lot of questions. So what I'd like to do is just start with what I have to say. I'll ask one question and sit down. I don't need to be interrupted when my 30 seconds are up.
Can I just clarify that it is okay to ask questions?
I know, as long as I get done in five minutes. Okay, so it was November 30th, 2023, when I came to the first presentation here and we watched and saw what was coming. Obviously, we've had a lot of mismanagement. I mean, we are looking at living on a credit card here for the next five years. And we have all of these projects that have not been done. So the, the amount of mismanagement here is just overwhelming. So what happened was this basically got shelved for a year and a half. It's been shelved and nothing has been done. In that year and a half, we could have had another master plan done. The important thing here is our master plan is not correct. We've just been shown at least one reason it was not correct. It is outdated. It is, the water master plan is 13 years old. There's entirely new legislation, new drought regulations. People have gone to zero scaping. The city has let medians die. All the information's old. The same thing with the sewer. The sewer was last done in 2018. That is old information. So what we're doing is taking old, inaccurate information and trying to do a cost of service and rate study on top of old information. I would submit that the first thing we need to do to do this right is to do a new water and sewer master plan so we get it right this time. I mean, we're asking people to pay over 100% because in the past, we haven't kept up with our infrastructure and we're asking people to pay for it on a credit card. I understand, and I want to thank Councilman Steele and Councilman Wong for looking into the Leisure World issue. And I understand why that's upsetting to Leisure World. As I looked at 2020 cost of service study, one of the reasons that I'm saying it's outdated is that Leisure World was scheduled to pay, and this is off the top of my brain and, and it's old, so sometimes I don't get my figures right when I'm just going off the top. But I'm saying But I'm saying, I believe it was like a million, um, what was it? About a million-five, I don't know, it was about five hundred thousand dollars more over the last few years than they've actually paid because the use is down because of all the drought laws and the drought regulation. So at this point, when we're asking to actually be, to bill what is actually there, I don't think it's as bad as it looks on the surface, but I do think we need to know. And we can't know without a new master plan and a new cost of service study. With that, I'd just like to remind you that the water rates have increased forty percent since two thousand twenty-one, and we still don't have the projects done. We have some that are in, in, uh, in design. We have some that are in design. But, uh, we did take a lot of salaries out. There are two ways to balance this budget. We can either ask the people for more money, or we can cut the budget. One or the other. Question, and then I'll sit down, is, um, that when city hall pays for water, city, city hall doesn't pay for water. The residents pay for water and the businesses pay for water. So when we say that the city is using X amount of water, how is that spread out over our residents and businesses? Okay, so anyway, the, I just would ask you before going any further with the two eighteen, let's get it right this time. Let's go back, get our master plan done, find out who owes what, and make it equitable for everybody. Thank you.
Can we answer that question? I was asking if we could, if somebody could answer your question.
The city has many different revenue sources that pays the water bill. So we pay one, the water bill, as if it, we were a resident, and we utilize the general fund to pay that. So there's many different sources. So we couldn't align it to, say, one individual or one resident because there's properties tax, there's TOT, as you know, sales tax, many different verabilities in there.
Just to add on to that, it would not be permissible to spread the cost of the city's water use onto ratepayers because the city is treated just like a ratepayer as everyone else, and we're charged the reasonable cost of providing service to our parcels, and we don't add that to the rates applied to other parcels.
Okay, thank you.
Can I pick it back off of specifically slide nineteen? For the fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, the personnel cost was about two million, just over two million, but we're projected for it to slide downwards to about one point five. Do we have a, a general understanding of why maybe the personnel cost was so high? And why is there an expected decline if we are going to be moving forward with some of these CIP?
Councilmember Wong, um, I could take a stab at this question here. Some of the personnel cost has to do with a frozen position for, or, and certain vacancies related to personnel. So there was a decline, given that our adopted budget has reflected that.
Anybody else like to speak?
I was just wondering, when it comes to the two eighteen notice process, there was some confusion when we talked about this in twenty twenty-four in January as to how many responses are available to the residents in Leisure World? Some folks thought just one. And then, um, uh, the director of Public Works clarified that and said that there were about two hundred and fifteen or so. And I was just wondering, um, about the two eighteen, is it still about two hundred and fifteen opportunities for Leisure World to respond?
Thank you, Mayor, if I may try to take a stab at this question as well. So at the May twelfth meeting in a couple of weeks, we're going to be adopting Prop two eighteen procedures, which actually outlines, um, what are the voting processes and including the number of eligible protests for Leisure World specifically. I want to say that it's two hundred fifty-nine or plus or minus a few, but we will have that detailed out in the two eighteen procedures that will be coming before council on the twelfth.
And then that number would be divided amongst the, the mutials? And so the folks in those different, um, mutials, HOAs, would be able to speak to their directors about how they would like to have those mutials vote in the two eighteen?
The parcels related to each specific mutual will have their option of how they want to proceed with, um, for or against, or whether they want to submit a protest towards the rates. The condos, individually owned condos, would each have their own. In addition to Golden Rain Foundation as a whole, the, um, the parcels that are, uh, may, uh, I guess, operated and maintained by Golden Rain Foundation will have those on, um, for them to consider as well.
And, and you said that meeting was in May?
Twelfth.
May twelfth, okay.
That's the city council agenda item, correct?
That is correct.
Right.
Okay. Well, um, I would also like to see maybe a, a more recent study because as already mentioned, that's pretty old material you're looking at. Thanks, thank you.
Thank you, Hope.
Hello, Matthew Terry here. I'm a resident of Silvage. And, uh, my comment just has to do with the Naval Weapons Station. I, I kind of would love to see more information on kind of like, I know there was a little bit, the bottom slides, kind of, of some of the rates they're paying, but I, I think I'd like to see more information on kind of the, really, how that compares against us and other things, and we're talked about that, just because, I kind of talked about this at the budget meeting, but, I mean, the Naval Weapons Station puts a pretty large burden on us. I mean, like, the, the best example could be, yeah, just kind of thinking like, a perfect world about how you would lay out utilities, right? Let's say if you're building a city, you, you, you would basically put a road down, you put utilities down the middle of the road, and then you pop businesses on both sides of the road, and then all those businesses, all those homes, all those things, we basically kind of share the cost of all of that stuff, right? But for us, we have a, a huge entity within ourselves that kind of, um, blocks a lot of things that we can do in terms of subsidizing costs of things, right? I mean, the biggest one is, uh, the, the water line we have to run, that we're running and maintaining between, on Westminster Boulevard, between Silvies Boulevard and Bolsa Chica. That's a two-mile run. We, you just mentioned that we, we have seventy-three miles of water lines. So that's three miles, three, or three percent of all our water lines. We can't really subsidize the cost of maintenance and stuff by having ratepayers coming off of it. And I mean, if you include all the other utilities for the water lines that are along the border of the Naval Weapons Station, that goes up to ten percent of all our lines. And so I, I have no clue what all their rates kind of come out to be, but I'm fairly confident that they're not paying their fair share in this whole discussion. And so I would really love to see, uh, really, like, more, like proactive, the city council talking to the Naval Weapons Station, kind of trying to bring them in as a partner, figuring out how we can, how, I mean, it's a trillion-dollar department of the federal government. We should be, they should be covering some of the costs. I mean, if they were a, a city that we are bordering, they would cover one hundred percent of the costs of the water line on Westminster Boulevard between Silvies Boulevard and Bolsa Chica. They would be covering fifty percent of the costs of maintaining the lines along Silvies Boulevard. They would be, and so, I mean, that's, the fact that we're covering those costs, it just doesn't really seem proportional to the relationship we have with them, especially since they block a lot of the, you know, potential that we could use with those lines when they're running because we, like the Silvies one, Silvies Boulevard one, we can only use fifty percent of its capacity because we can only build on half of that, that side of the street and that line. And so, uh, really, I think before we even get into discussions about how we slice and dice all of this between all of ourselves, I really think the city should really show that they're trying to see how they can make Silvies, uh, the Naval Weapons Station really pay their fair share first, and then come to us and say like, okay, now let's work off of whatever we have left over that we need to fill up.
If I may, Mayor, um, and thank you very much for your comments related to the Westminster Transmission Line, uh, I'm sorry, Westminster Avenue Transmission Line, um, just, uh, adjacent to the Naval Weapons Station. That is a transmission line. So where we get our import water, um, where our import water line turnout is, is over at Westminster by Springdale area. So, um, so again, just wanted to focus that. That's not where a majority of the Naval Weapons Station is tapping off their water. This is our conduit to actually get import water. So I do want to distinguish that difference. A lot of where Naval Weapons Station is getting their service from is off Seal Beach Boulevard.
Thank you.
Seal Beach Boulevard.
But I mean, like, still, we, we pay to maintain a line. Like, first, I mean, you mentioned that, like, I don't know if that, the, that one valve that you were talking about earlier was within that zone. But I mean, like, we, we still, the Naval Weapons Station ain't gonna shell out the money if we need to fix anything along that line, right? Or the county isn't, we are, right?
Yes, that is our water line.
So there, so, I mean, like, basically, in terms of what they're paying, they're basically probably paying roughly in line rates that I'm probably paying as well, right?
Their rates are calculated the same way as any other ratepayer does, including a fixed meter water charge and their volumetric charges.
Oh, that's not fair.
May I respond to that? So all of that is described in the two thousand twenty cost of service study. And I don't remember exactly for water, but I remember clearly for sewer. There is a sewer line that runs down Seal Beach Boulevard, down to a pump station, and it's pumped back up over to a pump station over by the four ninety-five. Both the, the naval station and neighboring agency, neighboring customers from Seal Beach use that sewer line, and it has been apportioned in proportion to flow. So the Navy is charged for that sewer line in proportion to their use of that sewer line. And it's in the two thousand twenty cost of service study. So I do not agree with that statement that they're not paying their fair share because that was an explicit calculation done in the two thousand twenty cost of service study.
Thank you. Anybody else?
There are some very good points made by the previous speakers. I think that Raff Tellis made some comment about in two thousand twenty-three that the water rate study was postponed. And, um, and it kind of was because, it was last year because the new shiny object was Measure GG, the tax. And so everything was kind of deferred to the tax, so we could concentrate on that. But beyond that, um, you know, and we had a meeting, and we asked for all these, we asked for all of the, the, not just Leisure World, we asked for, uh, the condominiums and some of the apartment buildings to look at those as well, to see if there was, you know, fair share happening regarding the cost or the service to what they're paying versus what, uh, single-family homes are paying. You know, the five of you were, you know, elected, and there's a lot of people that are over sixty-five, not just in Leisure World, but in all of our areas. Average age right now is, thirty-eight percent is sixty-five and older, but the average age in our town is sixty-two. Okay, that's sixty-two. They don't all live in Leisure World. So I know in talking to people, to your constituents, Ben, there's a lot of people that are original homeowners. I know in Old Town there is. And so when you're talking about, you know, not just the three hundred and sixty dollars a year more for water, did you mention Edison or gas or insurance? I mean, it's everything. And I think that there are, we are hearing from people that are losing, about to be, uh, be forced out of their homes because of rising costs. And it's not just the water. You know, my question is, well, not just question, there is a way to fund it, to fund the study. We don't need to have smart meters. There's three cities right now that I, in, that I've seen in Orange County that are having, that are starting to phase them in. Newport Beach, Santa Ana, and Laguna Nogal. There's no reason why we have to do that. There's four hundred thousand, there's four million at the, from this point to twenty thirty. Take that right off the books. There's four hundred thousand in the next year. Fund the study. It's not an absolute, we don't need them. And it's kind of presumptuous that on the warrant, there was already a bill for the provider of the smart meters. Did, did, do we all think it was going to pass? I mean, or, or do we currently have a contract? You know, I think we need to be smarter and look at this. I think we need to freeze the hiring. I think we need to review the percentages for all personnel that get paid from the enterprise fund and make sure there's accountability. We know there wasn't. We've seen it. We've, we've, a forensic accountant should go through line by line and figure out who is getting paid off of that account in the last five years. I think that there's problems with, you know, you know, how are you accounting for A to U's? And the, when the water pipeline goes into one home and there's three different parcels, uh, you know, using it? How is that done? Is it just on volume? Is that fair? No. You know, you said that this is best suited for our city, this particular study. It doesn't look like that because we've seen Raff Tellis's studies in many other cities all around California. We have taken the time to line by line go through it, through them, and see what other kind of alternatives there probably, there are, and that could be used for our city too, and I don't see it here. And lastly, you know, you made a mention of Westminster and the valve break. Wasn't that, wouldn't we just have that construction issue last year? I mean, if something breaks where you paid somebody else to, to, whatever they did, I mean, is there any guarantees? I mean, probably not. And, um, and then I know you mentioned the ninety-five point five percent and the eighty-one point seven percent. But it's just, you know, remember, this is every five years. Then you're going to come back with something else. There's never an ending. There's never an ending. So I think, I think we have to look at some alternative ways that are more fair, more in line. And the CIP projects need to, you know, if you cost it out and you have a negoti, I don't understand how you negotiate it, okay? Maybe I should because, and when you cost out a project, does it, is there a guarantee it's going to stay if you have, if you've already, you know, there's the planning phase. I know there's different phases, but it just seems like when we hear inflation happens, it seems like the project was never negotiated or confirmed, or there was no agreement because, and usually there's other things that are negotiated, there's a twenty percent buy or something like that. But in, in this case, you know, the numbers that Raff Tellis showed were just, you know, amazing, doubling. Like, who's doing the negotiation? How is it done? And maybe we should try to get together with other cities and use the power of volume and negotiate better.
Your time has expired.
Okay, thank you.
Were you finished, Teresa?
Yeah.
Okay. Iris, do you want to address any of her questions?
Certainly, and, um, there, there were some points.
Forgive me if I had missed a couple of items here. Starting with Ms. Miller's latest point about CIPs and negotiations. We do bid publicly bid these projects, so, um, they are not negotiated. These are actual line items that contractors bid for, so, and we have to adhere to it. But of course, um, if City Attorney Gorale wants to chime in on that, by, by all means, I just wanted to provide that opportunity as well. Yes, we do understand that pricing has increased. Steve has provided that, uh, comment about Ventura, just to show that we're not alone in terms of increases in pricing across the board. Everybody is really suffering the same thing. Yes, electricity and, um, you know, the cost of cell service, everything is indeed going up. And as I mentioned earlier, so is water and sewer operations. So, um, we, we feel it and we do understand, and I don't want to sound like that we're not sympathetic to the situation and for the same reason, even though it is a risk, um, and we are still providing the two options for consideration because we are sympathetic to how much, um, cost of living is increasing. Let's see, I believe that Westminster, the valve breaking, um, this is a new location. We have a number of valves along Westminster Avenue, so this isn't a, a location that we have previously repaired. It is another new location. Of course, um, we location that we had previously repaired. It is another new location. Of course, we do have a lot of valves breaking. Like Steve mentioned, our system is rather old, so there are a number of locations that will break and we will find them and, and repair them as we can. We try to do everything we can, but we don't always have money for them. So I want to take this opportunity also to address, like, the same thing related to the water and sewer master plan updates that were brought up by a few members of the public as well. I don't disagree that we should try to update it. However, it is an undertaking that we cannot also pay for. I just mentioned that we had $100,000 worth of repairs that we just found last week that we can't pay for, let alone a water master plan that could be a few hundred grand. Same thing for a sewer master plan, a few hundred thousand dollars just to update, not talking about the time and effort that's associated with it as well. Provided that these rates move forward, absolutely. I think that that would be one of our first line of items that we want to move forward with also. I can't speak necessarily to where California is going in terms of ADU regulations and legislations as it currently stands. There isn't a separate meter that is required for ADUs and JADUs. And Director Smidl, feel free to chime in on that. But as it currently stands, if it's tapping off of an existing residential ADU, I mean, a single-family residential or multifamily residential, we're not charging them an additional meter size, so, or meter. We are, of course, accounting for that additional volumetric water usage that is being consumed by those additional people that are living on the premise, but that's where the legislation currently stands. I believe that there was a discussion about smart meters also that has come to a halt because, again, for funding reasons, that we submit a grant application to do smart meters for AMI. Yes, we did. We did submit a BOR application. Hopefully, we will be successful on that and get a significant amount of it paid for. Not only is this going to be really accounting for water usage, water loss and whatnot, it is going to be playing a big component in our ability to comply with state mandates on water conservation as well. So look at it from both angles. It is infrastructure enhancement, it's reliability for homeowners to really see that, you know, compared to bill versus what they're actually consuming in real-time data, in addition to allowing us to comply with the state. So I know that there were maybe a couple other items that I'm not sure if I hit all of them or not. So if not, I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Iris. Anybody else? James?
Can I ask one more question?
Yes. Oh, come to the podium, please.
Well, James, James is waiting.
Yes.
It's just a question. I believe that we have to import water, even if we had huge reserves of groundwater, because we are legislatively only allowed to take X amount of water out of the ground. Is that correct?
So, good question. A lot of basins are adjudicated basins where they actually allow and cap the amount of water you could use. In Orange County, our groundwater basin is adjudicated. So each year, the Orange County Water District does prescribe a basin pumping percentage that we can pump up to without a penalty. So currently, that is at 85%. It does fluctuate from year to year depending on the water reserves.
And it's my understanding that what we do is we use the groundwater and then replenish, either during the summer or the winter, we replenish our wells and all that. But no matter what, we still have to import, no matter how many wells we refurbish and establish.
Not necessarily. There are opportunities that would actually allow us to pump up to 100%. So these are operational items that we do discuss with the groundwater manager, in this case OCWD, on a regular basis to see what is our ability to actually take advantage of more affordable groundwater options.
Yeah, okay. Because it was my understanding we were not allowed to pump 100%. Thank you.
I want to add on to that. That was one of my questions. If we get fully operational per this plan, if we needed to still buy water or import water, and if, what are we currently paying for import water as it stands right now?
I think it's about 1,265 or something with that range right now, but it is going to be going up.
But on an annual basis, what's the total?
Oh, how much we have used so far. I don't have that number offhand of what year-to-date how much we have spent on import water, but be happy to get back to you on that.
I was just, I was wondering because maybe that number is, is still included in where we're at right now. Would we be able to deduct that amount then? So if we're not having to import water, can we reduce these scenarios by that amount?
If we are allowed to and we're to pump 100% without penalty, then certainly those numbers would be reflected. However, we can't be certain that we're able to do so. And it would have to be analyzed and looked at on a year-to-year basis.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And what would allow us to pump to 100%? What, what is that 85 to 100, what's in that gap that would allow us to move up?
Certainly. I don't want to speak on behalf of OCWD here, but there are certain factors that would put us in a more ideal situation if we continue to pump water. Say, for instance, their groundwater replenishment system is very successful and we have an abundance of groundwater that we can pump from. Seal Beach is actually located in, actually, I don't really, I kind of consider it ideal for us because we are right on the border to groundwater basins. Hydrology, hydraulically speaking, our groundwater basin is a little bit more elevated. So water that doesn't get used in Orange County actually seeps into the LA County groundwater basin. So it is encouraged of us, in good times, that we can actually pump more so it doesn't leak over to the other side of the county lines. So I, I just, I mean, again, these are things that operationally the producers do speak of quite often, but it's not necessarily an every-year situation. So we do want to be absolutely sure that we can actually produce that amount of water by talking to OCWD on a regular basis.
I was gonna add, having worked for the Orange County Water District, every other city that draws groundwater would possibly be asking that same thing. So it's not just Seal Beach saying, we have a need, we, we want this. It's, can be very political, the entire, most of the county that's served by that basin. So just know that not everyone is necessarily going to say, yes, give them 100% because they're going to want it too. So there's, there's a lot that decides that pumping percentage, as well as managing the basin so it's not overdrafted, so that it will continue to be a plentiful source for everybody. So.
Okay, thank you.
If I may, question for Raff Tellis, for Steve. Our last, our last cost of study, cost of service study was done in 2020. Prior to the 2020 study, when was the last study done prior to that? Do we know?
I wouldn't know. I believe it was done by...
2012.
2012. So it was 2012 and then 20, what's the normal shelf life of a cost of service study?
So, there is no regulation that...
There is no regulation that states how often you have to do a cost of service study, but most of my clients do, do them every year because they like having a report that derives the rates. However, a small portion of my clients will go a year without doing a cost of service study. So, in other words, they'll do one, they'll skip the, skip one on the next rates, rate cycle, and then they'll do one the following year.
So if everything was, was, was great, they would do it annually? But in most cases, on average, they would do it every other year? Is it fair to say?
I would say roughly maybe 25, 20 to 25% of my clients do it every other, every other rate study.
It's not annually.
No, not, well, no. Rate studies are usually for five years. So they'll do a rate study and a cost of service that covers five years. Then their next rate study won't have another cost of service. And then the following one will. So you're spanning 15 years there. So one rate study has a cost of service, the next one doesn't. This is only for a quarter of my clients, and then the next one does. The majority of my clients enjoy having a cost of service simply because it derives the rates from start to finish.
Sorry to interrupt. Just to clarify, when you say every year, do you mean every rate study, or you really mean every year?
Every...
Every rate study. Okay, just clarifying.
Every five years.
The most are five-year.
Right.
Okay, thank you, James. Yes.
I know.
I think the issue is not the cost of service study, it's the master plan. Because the cost of service studies, if I understand, is based in the master plan that's 13 years old and seven years old. Am I correct?
A cost of service study will largely be based on what our infrastructure needs are. While these master plans are indeed, can be using, can use a refresh, it doesn't, I, I don't want to discount that our staff works on these infrastructures on a daily basis. So we are also very familiar with our infrastructure, infrastructure needs. We have certified operators that are very, very familiar and probably knows it better than a buck itself. So I don't want to discount that expertise.
I wouldn't discount that, but I do think maybe the master plan is...
I definitely don't disagree with you.
James.
I'd like my 30-second notice, too, please. Thank you. Mary Landau, City Council. Seal Beach is in the red. A couple weeks back, the phone room was bragged about and thank yous were issued around the room. I never heard how much money the city made. Do we make money on these? The car show was discussed, but again, nothing mentioned about the financial impact. A broke business, which is what our city is, should have financials attached to everything. I know my hair salon on Main Street loses a lot of money on the day of the car show. Clean water to our homes and apartments and dirty water leaving them is essential. Fun runs, car shows, concerts at the beach, and other parties are not. And this is firstly a business and should be run that way. I asked the city council to be our Doge in the last meeting and keep our civil servants accountable. We have another issue of Doge lately. I don't know if you heard. They found that the IRS website had their login instead of at the top corner, wherever most websites are, it was buried in the middle of the front page. They sent a note to the IRS saying, you should probably relocate it. They heard back from them that it was gonna cost a zillion dollars and they could have it done by July 21st. Elon had one of his people do it in 71 minutes for free. The Seal Beach version of this is multiple photos in the biweekly newsletter of our city manager every time a meager task like filling a pothole is amazingly accomplished. Filling potholes is simply what is expected. Celebrating it is a huge problem. The yearbook committee from Los Alamos High could put this newsletter out. Potholes, Cake for City Employees Appreciation Day, Ecological Justice, and such great news. But maybe the devil is in the details. This last biweekly newsletter, buried in the fluff, was the discussion of this meeting. And in particular, it said we were gonna discuss a five-year plan that could impact rates. That is a hell of an understatement. Could? If it said could have a major impact on rates, we might have more people here and more people interested. But that was kind of an interesting way to bury that. But let's get back to how, how city business is conducted and the highly-paid public officials whose salaries are similar to those doing jobs in cities with multiple times larger budgets and multiple times larger residents. Seal Beach has Phil Jackson coaching the basketball team at McGaw, and we have a losing record. We can't sustain our grossly inflated, inflated local government and actually do the work of the people. When the city found out the pipes the city owns from the curb to the sewer line were getting old and problematic, they snapped into action and made that the responsibility of the residents, to repair, to replace them, and to pay the city for a permit to do that. Now, when they go along and they replace the sewer lines on these proposals, what are they gonna do about those lines to our homes? Because if they're not replacing them, they're gonna take a lot of jostling and impact when they replace that sewer line, which could cause them to be problematic. And I'd like to know what's been thought about with that. You know, in my mind, instead of what we're seeing now on a, on a couple-weekly basis in the city manager newsletter, I'd like to see something like this. Dear Seal Beach residents, we are broke and it's getting worse. Our infrastructure is failing and we didn't plan for this. So our first recourse is to tax you more, which you voted for surprisingly, and then radically upsize your water bill with no end in sight. But we, as the leaders of this city, will also share your pain during this crisis. We will institute a hiring freeze on city employees. We will institute a freeze on any raises for city employees. As your city manager, I'm going to review all the contracts for services we pay for. If they can be ended, like street sweeping, which does no good and causes parking issues for citizens, we will do that. If we can't negotiate with vendors or unions, we will look into competitive bids and everything is on the table, from replacing the police with the Orange County Sheriff and so on. City events, which do not have a positive ROI financially or at a minimum breakeven, will be put on hold until we have solved our financial issues and your water bills return to the levels of this last year. I will oversee the business outreach in regards to our many shopping centers and business locations, which need to be leased to the best income-producing companies. We are committed to doing your business and not giving you the business.
You have 30 seconds to wrap up.
Thank you. What we witness here today is typical, and it's what every marketing company does. It's called hurt and rescue. And the rescue is always money. Whether it's, I can't get a date. Well, for $15, you're gonna get a concealer, and now you're pretty and you can get a date. To the far end of that spectrum, which is, you're gonna die if you get this flu, so you gotta get the shots and this and that and everything else. And this is somewhere in the middle, but it's all hurt and rescue. Every 15-second ad you hear on the commercials, on the radio, on the TV, to the infomercials, it's always, you're screwed, but money will solve it.
Your time has expired.
Thank you, James. Are you able to?
No.
Okay. Anybody else?
Can we answer the question about the sewer lines to the home? I think the question was, who pays to take it?
Certainly. So within the city's services are privately owned and maintained by the property owners. If there was a change in the history of how we maintain the service laterals, I, I'm not familiar with that, but that doesn't mean that I can't look into it to see if there was indeed a, a change in our, our stance of maintaining these laterals.
So if any damage is done when the lateral is, or when the main line is changed, will the city be responsible for that?
Certainly. If it's work that is on the city side, say if we were to line a sewer line that somehow causes damage to a lateral, for sure that that is on the city to repair.
I'm not sure I understood the first answer. So in the case of the sewer line, the new lines go in, but it's kind of like the gas company, how if you have a repair at your house connection, that's on you. Are we in the same scenario here?
Yes. So the services itself, like, say, on a sewer main line, that's for the city to own and maintain. Anything that tees off into the individual properties, in this case, will be privately owned and maintained.
That's actually from the curb to the sewer line, not on our property. Right now, we're paying for the stuff from the curb to the sewer line, not on our property, and we're responsible to maintain it.
Were there any other public speakers? At this point, does a council have questions?
You, you both mentioned earlier, I think, some of, some of the residents and Iris, yourself as well, you mentioned that you would love a new master plan, right? What would go into getting a new master plan, time-wise, cost-wise?
Thank you for asking that question, Councilmember Wong. Time-wise, to do a full-blown master plan, I'm just gonna take one of the utilities and not speak with both utilities at the same time. It is a large undertaking. It's not just like looking at our infrastructure to see what we've done in the past and just kind of put it all together. There are a lot more that goes along with it in terms of, like, field observations, new laws and legislations, operational needs and whatnot. So it is usually like a year and a half undertaking, optimistically speaking, possibly two years, depending on how complex it is, considering that, yes, as many members of the public have pointed out, that our rate studies are a little bit antiquated. So it may take a little bit more, so possibly two years right there. And if, like, I would say, like, $200,000 to $300,000 for each utility, if not more than that, actually. So quite a bit of undertaking. And frankly speaking, financially, we don't have that available, and time-wise, we don't have that luxury either.
I'm biting my tongue on whether or not I should say something from experience, but my colleague here says I should.
Oh, blame it on me.
Yeah, so if it doesn't go over well, it's your fault, Gina. Raff Tellis works with a lot of engineering firms after they do a water or wastewater master plan. Probably 20% of our studies, the engineering firm does a water or wastewater master plan, then we come in and we say, okay, how are you gonna pay for that? Through rates. I can tell you through experience, every time I've done one, what are the engineers, and I have no, I'm an engineer, I've got nothing against engineers, but they come in and they do, they do their due diligence and they say, oh, that's insufficient, you don't have proper fire flow over here, and that's a dead section over there, and your pump station's old over here. And they pile on the cost. If you think your rates are a lot now, they're not gonna go down. I've never in 16 years have seen rates go down after an engineering firm did a water master plan. I've never in 16 years have seen rates go down after an engineering firm did a water master plan. So it won't be any better.
I'm not...
And it would delay everything too, right?
And it would delay everything.
Exactly. Because it's their job to analyze the condition and the pressure and the flow, and they run their models, and, and then they give you a list of all this stuff to do, and they don't tell you when you're gonna do it, but that list is really long.
How are you gonna pay for it?
Right. And then, and then every time I do a rate study, we put what the engineer says into the rate study, and then we say, "Ooh, nobody's gonna want to pay for that." So you start taking stuff out or delaying things, just like we're doing now, but you would do it on a grander scale. I've done this so many countless times. So I just thought I'd throw that in.
Thank you.
Do we, I'm sorry, Ben, were you done?
No, go ahead.
So to your point, updating a master water sewer plan, the water was from 2012, the sewer was 2018. Does it get us to the equity issue, the fairness issue? How do we get to, are we dividing this out correctly? Are we charging appropriately?
I would say no, because Raftellus's stance on costs are allocated in proportion to flow and meter size, I think stands, and it would not change that, so.
Did you want to join? Oh. Okay, so then, to the point that was made, that was raised about the naval weapons station, the quote was Navy not paying their fair share. How do we address that?
Like any other customer, they are being charged according to our rate structure. So, yes, they are paying a fair share according to our rate structure, yes. And the transmission line, whether one agrees or not, whether it should be borne on the naval weapons station or on the city, it stands, our rate structure stands. That, that's a transmission line, it's an import water line that serves the entire city, so it should not be borne on a particular entity that's adjoining that transmission line.
The other question I had, we talked about the, hang on a second. Oh, Ben brought, or excuse me, Councilman Wong brought this up. Sorry, Ben.
It's okay, this is a formal meeting, right?
Study that we go for, cost of service. And Ben's question was, the cost of service study, we had one in 2012 and one in 2020. The data that's behind those numbers, the data behind the 2012 and the 2020, is it the same? So in other words, does 2020 use 2012's data? No. So we use new data for 2020? Okay. That's on cost of service, yeah.
Anytime we would do a new rate study or cost of service study, we would get the freshest data that we can. Fresh flows, fresh costs, fresh everything.
Steve, if I may. Raftellus has a methodology that it applies to the naval base and to Leisure World, and that produces the cost of service based on, you know, our, the meter size. Is there a way to do a more focused cost of service study for Leisure World and the naval base that shows exactly what it costs for those two particular connections? That's not necessarily based on meter size, and then factor that into the rate study? And I say that recognizing that that could mean that the, the outcome is that Leisure World and Naval Base actually costs less than what we're currently charging them. I don't know, I'm just asking the question.
So I'll start by saying, not that I know of. There, there is, for instance, you know, there's another way, not another way, it's, it's not in the M1 manual, but if the city wanted to allocate costs in proportion to, say, dwelling units, as opposed to just by meter size, Raftellus would do it, but we would not recommend it, I don't know.
And, and Nick, the city attorney, is not asking you to do that.
Let's be clear.
I, I'm just asking, is there a way to say, "Look, this is what it costs to get water to the door there, and this is what it costs when all the phone calls come in." I have no idea how many phone calls come in from Leisure World, just to look at it holistically and figure out what that cost is.
Well, I would say that that's what we did in according with the rate-setting manual from the American Water Works Association. Is there another way to do it? I'm sure there's another way to do it, but there's a textbook way of doing it, and that's what we followed, so.
I understand, I, I totally understand, and I defend doing that way. But I will say that Leisure World is, is unique, and I think we both agree that it's probably one of the more unique water customers in California.
Yeah, as I mentioned, yeah.
I have another question, so in, we know that... You wanna go, you wanna go first? Okay. The, the laws keep changing, and this whole push now is to use and to keep conserving water, keep conserving water. So we know we're gonna get charged more for using less. We're already in that scenario, it's coming out of Sacramento, they're gonna continue to push on that. So how do you, I guess my question is, when you look at this updating a master plan, updating cost of service, the rate study, how do we account for the fact that we're continually in a negative situation from Sacramento? Because we have to conserve, 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 and when we do that, we get, we have to pay more by conserving. And how do you factor that in to this?
Yeah, it's a very good question. And the three options that come to mind are, some of my clients in cities establish a rate stabilization fund, which you, you don't have. But the rate stabilization fund is a reserve that you have, and you could use in either an economic downturn or if there's a drought. Instead of charging your customers more, you've got whatever, $1 or $2 million on the side that you use to get through the drought. So that's option number one. Option number two is some clients charge what's known as drought rates. They're surcharges, they're politically unpopular, of course, because you're charging a, a higher rate when people are using less. Nonetheless, they are used. And then finally, there's been a small trend to, remember in the slides, there were fixed charges. There's been a small trend to increase the fixed charge at some of my clients to maintain a certain amount of fixed revenue that doesn't change, no matter how much your clients use. But you have to balance this with the fact that the state is trying to get you to conserve water, and one of the things that happens when you increase your fixed charge is you give the customer a little less control over, over their bill because they're paying that fixed charge no matter how much they use. So the conservation signal isn't as strong. So you have to weigh those. So those are three things that come to mind that help counteract the decrease in water use.
Okay, and then one more question. On our invoices, we have the meter, the volumetric. And so I've been, I would really like to see us get to a capital cost. So whatever we end up with, scenario one, two, or who knows, three, right? And we know this bucket is gonna cost us, whatever it was, $44 million or whatever. We have a way so we can look at it and know we're paying, we're doing the projects, we're paying it down with our rates, and at some point, when those projects are done, that charge goes away for those projects. And then also, within that fund, it allows for emergencies, because, you know, we're 120 years old. Is there a way, and how are the cities who are doing three-line items? And the reason I like the capital is just to make sure we can assure the public that we're getting the projects done, and that we're actually getting the money in, we're doing projects, and we're keeping our commitment. How does that work for other cities that are doing the third line?
So I have seen capital charges, for example Huntington Beach has them. I would say they are the minority. If I had to just guess from my gut, maybe 10, 15% of my clients have a capital charge. Huntington Beach does it as a fixed charge, and it does have the pros that you mentioned. It does have some cons, in the sense that it charges in, it charges customers a fixed charge in proportion to potential flow, as opposed to actual flow, because it's charged on meter size. So it is conceivably possible that a two-inch meter might even use more water than a three-inch meter, but they're gonna pay for capital in proportion to their two-inch meter, as opposed to a three-inch meter. This is a bit of an academic thing, all right? This is something that maybe a rate consultant might banter with a glass of wine somewhere. But there are pros and cons of, of, of having a capital charge. I think if you're asking for a capital charge for this study, I don't think it would be possible without a cost of service study. But what I could tell you is, capital is now part of your fixed charges and your volumetric charges. I think we could tell you how much of those charges are going towards funding capital. But creating a capital charge on its own, I think, I, I don't think we could, we could do, okay?
I have a comment, if I may. Okay. It seems like everybody, my silence about the, the fairness, you know, the inequity in our water rate study here, I, I, I'm not speaking about that too much. Leisure World is different, it's, I, I agree that it's different. I agree the fact that we get to pay maybe 15 bucks a month while everybody else is playing, paying 40 bucks a month seems like on the face of it, and gosh, that's gotta be unfair, that's inequitable. There are several reasons why I don't think it's inequitable. I think the six-inch valve sides that we did have was an equitable price. And the reason I say that is on our bill at Leisure World, the two 12-inch pipes are reflected there. And the second of those two 12-inch pipes barely gets used. And the first 12-inch pipe serves both Leisure World and all of College Park West, as well as those other buildings around. So when you stop and think about 12 inches, College Park West, that's, seems fair to me. Six inches seems fair to me. I'm not gonna complain much about going from six inches to, to 12-inch meters. We've talked about this, Iris, you and I, and I think other people probably see that. It's still, it's still not that much dollar-wise to a Leisure World resident. But the defining characteristic to me is the fact that Leisure World built their own water distribution system some years ago. And it would seem like some, some form of property seizure, if the city comes along and says, "No, we want all of those distribution pipes, and we want you to pay like you're a regular person in Seal Beach, and we're gonna put meters all over the place." It's like you're taking away something that we built and paid for ourselves back in the 1960s. So I, I've got a real problem with this idea that we are not paying our fair, fair share. I think we are, we pay the same price as everybody else, and for volume, and now we're gonna pay four times more for our meter that nobody else has had to pay for. I don't know how many other customers of our city water system have to pay for their peak fire use, meter size. And so if there are others, I'd like to know, maybe some other multifamily homes or, I don't know. But that of itself is not that big of a number. In the fifth year, it works out to about $1.50 per Leisure World person. So I don't agree that we don't pay our fair share. I think we do pay our fair share. And the fact of the matter is, it's because we built our own water distribution system and our own sewers back in the 1960s. We own them, they belong to us. The city has, did ask for an easement, I think is the term, back in, I think, 2004. So the city is, we have granted an easement to the city for all the distribution pipes in Leisure World at four inches and up. But underneath four inches, we pay for it, just like you pay for, pipes break in your house, we pay for those things, just like you guys. So just, you can see it's unfair and inequitable and all the rest of that stuff, and I just, I don't, don't agree with that premise. So anyway, that's all I want to say.
I just had one quick comment this weekend. I talked to somebody from Fullerton, and they had a per-dwelling unit charge.
For water and sewer, or just sewer?
For water.
Okay, I'm, I'm sure if you looked long and hard, you could find that, but in my experience, it's been very uncommon.
Can we see it in sewer?
Yes, for sewer, it's uncommon, but it's, I've yet to see it.
Sorry, for sewer, it's common, but it, in my experience, it's not common in water. It's not mentioned in the, and that, you know, doesn't mean that, it's not mentioned in the American Water Works Association M1 manual, as a way of allocating cost.
Mayor Landau, we're not familiar with Fullerton's rate right off the cuff, but I, I would, I would venture to think that there are, perhaps it was a combination of whether it's for sewer, but generally speaking, I do believe that Fullerton's services are metered, so which leads me to think that it's not per-dwelling unit. However, I do want to take a moment to look into the rates before we speak any further, that how do other agencies do it and not us?
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, we are going to adjourn to the city, the, we are adjourning the City Council to the City Council Regular Session Meeting at 7:00 PM. Thank you.